...twelve, two thousand and eighteen as presented.
Selectmen Nobley made a motion to a here second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Spadili. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Minutes are adopted. Next item, communications and announcements. I do have a communication from the town. I just want to make sure I have the details crystal clear for residents. And so I know that our last meeting, we had a conversation about the tree limbs that were down in the community. It was a conversation that has continued via social media, and I know that each of us, the selectmen, have spoken with the town manager. And so, beginning April ninth, the town will have multiple crews collecting down tree limbs. This will take several weeks, and so I think it's important for the public to understand that this isn't something that will happen overnight. The Sears Center will also be open beginning April seventh. They're open from eight AM to three PM Saturday, Tuesday, and Thursday. Residents will not be required to obtain a permit for the first thirty days to make it as easy as possible for folks who are getting rid of down limbs. And any North Andover contractors, though, will need a permit. So anybody that is in fact doing this as their business for private residents would require that permit identification. So...
And what were the days it was going to be open?
Saturday, Tuesday, and Thursday. Eight AM to three PM.
April seventh for the Sears Recycling, and then April ninth starts the pickups.
Yes.
Any chance of getting that open on a Friday also? I know that's, in the past, I've gotten calls from contractors, local contractors, that would like it open on a Friday, too.
We're trying to balance with sending out as many crews as we can to do pickups and staffing the center, so it's a little bit of a balancing act right now.
Put it in the thought process-
Yes, sir.
-and see if we can get it Fridays-
Yep.
-as well. Because I know that's always a day that people are trying to get out there.
Yep.
So, there was that. I also want to recognize our police chief. He was recognized this past weekend with the Officer Thomas Duggan Award, this passed Saturday by the Valley Patriot Newspaper. So, congratulations, Chief Gray.
Congratulations.
Also a reminder that tomorrow is town elections?
That's an important reminder.
Well, I figured I'd do it rather than someone else.
I actually was thinking-
Oh, go right ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead. You did it.
I was gonna say tomorrow is town elections. Voting is at the high school.
Seven, eight, at the high school.
Seven AM to eight.
Everyone must go to the high school.
I have an announcement.
Selectman Keen?
I think later we're gonna be talking about the traffic pattern related to the new kindergarten. And I just want to let everyone know that on March twenty-ninth, this Thursday, at six-thirty PM, we're going to have Dr. Price and Mr. Mealy, our Assistant Superintendent, join our PTO meeting to talk about the traffic and specifically the impacts to Atkinson families. But everyone is welcome. Certainly, if they're interested, there's a lot of people in that area, I know. So, that meeting again is Thursday, the twenty-ninth, at six-thirty in the Atkinson Cafeteria.
Great. Thank you to the school department for helping. Again, in front of that, and to the PTO for organizing it.
I have, I'll say it now. I usually say it at the end, but just wishing the families of North Andover and elsewhere a happy Easter and a happy Passover, which is hard to believe with all the snow and everything, that it's actually coming up very quickly. So, best to everybody on that.
Anything else under communications? Hearing none. We can go right into consent items. We have a request from Robert Autieri, who is requesting permission to use the streets of North Andover for the Samaritans of Merrimack Valley Walk for Hope on Saturday, October twentieth. And so, Mr. Autieri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Robert Autieri, and I am a representative of the Samaritans of Merrimack Valley. And with me is our Executive Director, Debbie Helms. Before we get into this year, I want to thank you for last year. It was really, it was the first time we've ever done anything like that. The Samaritans in Merrimack Valley's been around for about thirty years here, servicing people in significant emotional need. And because of the cuts, like any other organization, funding is so, so needed. And I want to just give a, just a couple of minutes after I'm through for Debbie Helms, just to tell you what we raised and what we did with that money. I also want to just take a quick opportunity to thank Lori for getting us on the agenda. I know there was some confusion and so forth, and also wish you all good luck tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
This event that we're planning, you notice we're calling it the Second Annual, so hopefully we'll see you. It worked so well, we were just amazed, amazed and saddened, I guess, at the same time, at the number of people that came. And we had an opportunity to meet some people and set up some counseling sessions and things of that nature. But the walk itself was extremely successful. This year, we want to do pretty much the same exact thing. We're focusing on the date of October twentieth. We were very fortunate. Last year, it was like sixty-five degrees. I don't know. God was good to us on that particular day. And same basic thing, it's gonna run from eight-thirty to around twelve to allow us to clean up and so forth. And the description, again, it is a walk. It is not a race. It is just a walk for hope. And the sponsors of the event are the Samaritans of Merrimack Valley and Family Services. And, as I said, the goal and purpose of the event is to raise awareness, both to the services that are available through the Samaritans and Family Services for people in emotional crisis, and also to raise needed funds to help service the people in Merrimack Valley. The walk site will be exactly the same. It's gonna start from Willows Professional Park, where my office is located, at eight-eleven Turnpike Street, down Willows, around the industrial park, up Flagship Drive, and ending at my office. It's about one point four miles. It's not a big, you know, course, but it serves its purpose. Hopefully, for parking, we should be okay, as last year we had no problems. All off-site parking was done at the Willows Professional Park, one and two. I'm in one. Two is right next door. And it's a Saturday, so there are very, very few businesses. And I always, I'm in the condo association there, so we'll run it through them. As I said, there'll be, it won't be a race. There is some speakers. And last year, we had few speakers, some music, no alcohol. We have not heard from or not contacted the police yet about this, and would take direction from you folks. Last year, we did, and they indicated there was no need for a detail. So obviously, whatever you folks decide is necessary. The police decides. We're expecting a little bit more, this time being optimistic. Last year, we had about two hundred people. We're expecting probably about two to three hundred people. And all the volunteers are people who are affiliated with the Samaritans or in some way been affected by suicide, suicide survivors. Last year, we had a group of about thirty, thirty-five people who just did a tremendous amount of work. And I think it was therapeutic for all of us to get involved in that. So, why don't I just give, if I could, Debbie Helms, just a couple of minutes, just to talk about what we did with the money and what we raised, and then we'll take any questions if you have any.
I actually took a trip to Bermuda on it. It was wonderful. We, if you know anything about suicide prevention, it's really difficult to get anybody generally in the public interest in what you're doing. And, because nobody wants to talk about it. And to have our first annual run have over two hundred walkers, we thought we'd probably raise about four thousand dollars. We actually raised over fourteen thousand dollars. And it's all thanks to Bob and the wonderful committee that we had of people who have lost somebody to suicide, because they recognize the importance of the work that we're doing and that they do, too. So, because of that, we actually, I'm the only full-time person at Samaritans, and we have one part-time person, but they work pretty much for the grant that we have with the Department of Public Health. So the best news from my perspective is that we were actually able to hire two more part-time people to work for, directly for the Samaritans of Merrimack Valley, which means we're hoping that we will be able to actually provide some new services, hopefully go out into the schools, because the suicide rate for youth is the second-leading cause of death. We want to get out into the schools more. And now that we have more personnel that can hopefully do this, that's what hopefully we'll be planning to do with it. So, this year, I think Bob's underestimating. I'm hoping for four hundred people, but we'll see. But we had the most devoted group of people who put their heart and soul into this, so it was truly amazing. So, thank you.
For the board's information, the police department is not recommending a detail. They will assign the sector car, if available, to assist.
They really don't need it in the park. It's just, especially on a Saturday, right?
Well, again, they will be using a public road, but there's no need right now.
Okay.
Yeah, we, obviously, it's a Saturday, and what I did last year, and I'll do the same thing. I went to every single business in the industrial park and talked to them and let them know. I guess it's, Bacon Joy is the one that's, which it smells nice on Saturdays, by the way. But they're about the only one. And like I said, for parking, we'll be able to use the two Willows, and that seems to take care of it. Any other questions? We appreciate, again, you giving us the opportunity to do it. It's really great.
Thank you. Well, that being said, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of the Samaritans of Merrimack Valley to hold the Walk for Hope charity event on Saturday, October twentieth, two thousand and eight, from nine-thirty AM to eleven-thirty AM, as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Selectman Valancourt, seconded by Selectman Spadili. Do we have any discussion?
No, other than, I think I said this to you last year. Thank you so much for all that you do. You truly do God's will for both the person and your family and their loved ones. Thank you. I know, but it's still, yeah. Thank you.
All in... We have not yet. All in favor?
We promise we will.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Your approved. Good luck. Thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is a request from the school committee. We do have Assistant Superintendent Mealy, as well as school committee member David Terese. He'll be here to discuss middle school.
We have our trustee friend over here. I'm looking.
We have plenty of people in the audience at home, but anyways.
Plenty of people.
Gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real quickly, I know Mr. Mailer and Dr. Price had submitted a memo regarding the statement of interest, as you know, and I know Selectman Spadili knows, and Selectman Valancourt. Last year, we applied to the school building assistance program for the North Andover Middle School. We had a great process with them. They came and visited the school. Unfortunately, we were not selected to move forward at this time. So the way the school building program works is you have to reapply every single year. So basically, we're asking, and this statement of interest is the first step along that way, and it requires a vote, not only the school committee, but also requires a vote of the Board of Selectmen as well. So, it's a very lengthy motion. Takes a long time to read, I believe. Selectman Spadili wrote, read it last time.
But I'm not the clerk right now.
And it must be read in full.
But, as you know, this is gonna be a very important project for North Andover in the future, so we're gonna obviously reapply. Hopefully, we'll be successful this year, and we'll move forward after that. So, that's our main request, but here to answer any questions regarding it.
Could you humor us with, it's important for the public to realize just what the need is from the superintendent. And so, it would be great if you would humor the public to hear what the superintendent thinks the condition of this middle school is, because I don't think many people realize. Although, you can see that there were bricks literally falling out of the building.
Yeah, sometimes the sign falls off, too. Sometimes it'll fall in the side.
It is not just an issue of the bricks on the exterior, but the actual interior of the building that I think the public needs to...
Sure. Well, the biggest thing is the class size at the middle school. It's the largest class sizes in the district. As you know, we're moving forward a kindergarten plan that's gonna reduce all our elementary school class sizes. The school committee visions this being our next step to get class size down across the board. Furthermore, the science wing, especially, the science labs are lacking. That'll be probably the focus of any renovation project. We initially are, right now, we don't have any plans in place, obviously. This is just the first step in the process. But I would say that, you know, any renovation would focus on, obviously reducing class size, obviously focusing on the science labs. Am I missing anything else?
In general, just, you know, middle schools take a lot of wear and tear, so the existing building itself needs some renovations as well. I will say that the feedback we got from the site visit, which was extensive, David was there, the town manager took part, the feedback we got was that they definitely agreed it was a need. We did a very good job presenting, and it just so happened that there were other high-ticket items that were a higher priority for them last year, but they definitely recommended to us that we reapply for this project, because they agreed with our determination that there was a need there.
It's not like the old days when you just feed them a list, and eventually they get to you.
Yeah.
It's a competitive process now. So we're competing against other schools, other school districts that apply every single year. And there's a certain amount of money in the pot every single year, and they dole that out as they see where the urgent needs are across the state. So, I thought we were very close. We got through the first cut. I think like eighty-five districts applied last year. We got down to forty-four. They ended up choosing, I think, sixteen or seventeen. Unfortunately, we weren't one of them last year. As Chair of the School Building Committee, I must say I was a little relieved in the sense that we're kind of still focused on the kindergarten plan. But I really, I'm excited that if we could wrap up the kindergarten plan building in August, like we're scheduled to do, we could jump right into this. If this gets approved, we'd find out in November or December.
What is the percentage now, or is it done differently?
Yeah, I can tell you the last time that we had a project through MSBA, it was forty percent.
I remember when it was two-thirds.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Forty percent reimbursed-
Reimbursement.
-to the municipality, so they see it takes up forty percent.
Sometimes it depends, too, on the project, if I'm not mistaken. Like, for instance, I know there's a majority project this year, Somerville High School, which is like three-hundred-and-fifty million dollars or something. I think that's a much higher percentage for them.
It's because Somerville's demographics determine that.
Correct. Right, right.
But the upside is also you get the money a lot quicker.
Before, basically, you just got on the list, and you would eventually get paid. It might be twenty years after the fact, but it's a pool of money. As you know, one cent of the sales tax goes to the school building program every single year. So when that got revised several years ago, they, you know, obviously, they reduced the amount of money going back to cities and towns, but they made sure you got it quicker. They also limited the scope of projects. People were building swimming pools, and they took those out. People were building field houses. In fact, North Andover High School is one of the last, last projects to get built under the previous guidelines. So, we did get sixty-three percent for that project.
We did, and when you compare what we paid for that building compared to it, it's just, I know it was years ago, but we did really well with that, with that building.
And in that case, the school administration offices couldn't be there because-
Right.
-they restricted that.
You can't have school administration offices inside there, out there. So, so we'll see. But hopefully, with your support tonight, we can move forward together, again.
I think it's important, there was a specific paragraph that the superintendent provided in her letter, and so that is the paragraph that identifies the schedule, because I think that we may be, we may have spoiled almost our community with how quickly we've been able to get the ECC built, and hopefully that kindergarten built. And so I guess I'll just read that, this one paragraph, just so that the community's expectations are put on the correct path. So it's important to understand according to our superintendent that the process is long even for those projects that are invited into the eligibility period. Communities are given nine months to complete the eligibility requirements, twelve months to form the project team, twenty-four months to complete the feasibility study and schematic design, four months to obtain the funding, twelve months to complete the final design, and then however long construction takes. This is up to five years before construction even starts, in addition to the construction timeline. In general, the timeline from acceptance of an SOI to moving into a building is six and a half to seven years, and that assumes the SOI is accepted in the first year. So I just think that that's an important point to hit, that we've identified a problem now that will not be resolved in the very least until-
Possibly.
At the very least.
Possibly.
Very least, right? Seven years. And so I think that that's, I think it's a worthwhile endeavor. So, I would entertain a motion unless...
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the superintendent to submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest that will be submitted to the MSBA by no later than Friday, April sixth, two thousand and eighteen, for consideration in two thousand and eighteen for the North Andover Middle School located at four ninety-five Main Street, North Andover, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which the town of North Andover may be invited to apply to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. For Priority Two, elimination of existing severe overcrowding, as determined in the judgment of the authority, specifically to decrease class size from a current average of twenty-four point six students, and for Priority Seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, specifically replacement of our antiquated science labs, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance of or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city, town, regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. In addition, the Board of Selectmen of the town of North Andover confirms the following criteria apply to the request. The school facility has been and will remain in use as a public K-through-twelve school, serving public school students for the useful life of any new additions, any additions or new construction. The school facility has sufficient space to deliver its required educational programs. Except for the lack of space to allow for the decrease of existing class sizes, the school facility is structurally, functionally, and educationally sound, and has no other deficiencies, and all other building systems are operational, safe, and adequate for the delivery of the required educational programs. The need for additional space is not the result of neglect or the lack of routine or capital maintenance by the district. The district acknowledges and agrees to abide by all federal and state laws and rules, regulations, policies, and guidelines of the MSBA, and the district agrees to use the MSBA's pre-qualified OPMs and designers. The district has the ability to raise the local contribution required to fund the district share of the project in a timely manner, and the district has no entitlement to funds and the awarding of grants, if any, is at the sole discretion of the MSBA.
Great job.
That was like two sentences.
Both were made by Selectman Keen and seconded by Selectman Valancourt. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, vote.
Because I know some people are aware, but I believe you've named our new kindergarten.
Yes, we have. We had a great committee that was put together. I know Selectman Recolgera was on the committee. They had a lot of different, a lot of input from a lot of different people, and we decided, the school, we voted last week, two weeks ago, to name it the Annie, the Anne Sergeant Early Childhood Center, Anne Bradstreet.
Anne, sorry.
I'm sorry. We were at the Sargent School when we voted.
Sargent School's in the other.
I know, I know.
It's the other Anne.
I know, I'm sorry. But I mean, I voted in favor. I was very excited to do it, not only because of the history down here, but I didn't realize at the time that that school wasn't named after Anne Bradstreet. It was named after her husband at the time. So, I think that was something that someone who grew up in the town, I never knew, and it was-
Just the Bradstreet, yeah.
Just the Bradstreet. So, we're looking forward to it. We're still on time. The snow set us back a week, but they should be, you'll see some movement up there by Thursday, Friday.
End of this week.
Yeah, end of this week. So you'll see the-
There were some plows flying snow up there, and people are like, oh, I think there might be something happening.
Yeah. And I'll just take a quick opportunity to thank Ray and thank Andrew from the town side. We couldn't do this project without the help of the town side. There's a lot of, as you know, some town property, some school property. It's ground zero for a lot of action up there. So, we really appreciate all the effort and time that the town has given us.
Well, I'm delighted in the name. You know, my mother went to the Bradstreet School. My boys did when it was the kindergarten, and it's, I'm glad that it, we still kept the name Bradstreet in there. I think it's great.
Well, there was a lot of great submissions, but we're all excited that the Bradstreet name lives on.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Now we've got no one.
That's, okay. So next item on the agenda is the ratification of our collective bargaining agreement between the town and the NEPBA Local Two, which is our police officers/s sergeants' union for the period going from July first, two thousand and eighteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, as the board was briefed during the executive session, the town has reached a new three-year agreement with NEPBA Local Two, which encompasses patrol officers and sergeants of the North Andover Police Department. This is a three-year agreement, as you stated, that goes from July first of two thousand and eighteen to June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one. We reached, we probably had maybe four or five meetings with the union, very cordial, very amicable meetings. We reached consensus fairly quickly, for public safety unions especially. We were notified late, early Thursday morning, that the union overwhelmingly ratified the agreement, so now we are asking the Board of Selectmen also to ratify. And if so, it's on a future date. We will bring you the actual contract to sign.
Excellent. Good job. That's great work.
Thank you.
You know, it can't always be easy, but you guys do a great job negotiating these contracts. So, with that said, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the New England Police Penitent Association Local Two for the period July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Valancourt and seconded by Selectman Keen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, does that require a roll call?
Nope.
Nope. Perfect. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, for the police department, and thank you, Ray and Andrew, for your hard work. Next item on the agenda is the two thousand and eighteen annual town meeting warrant.
This is, as you're aware from past years, or for the two new selectmen who haven't been here in past, well, actually, no, you were part of the process last year also. Every meeting, we bring forward the warrant, because the warrant gets updated or whatever. So this latest version has a submission of zoning articles from the planning board, as well as all of the financial informations on the budgets, et cetera, and also the community preservation article. So it's a standard for the board to open the warrant unanimously, it must be, accept the warrant as presented, and then close the warrant again. And again, it's basically an update of what was previously provided to you two weeks ago? Two weeks ago.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we open the town warrant, two thousand and eighteen town warrant.
Motion made by Selectman Valancourt, seconded by Selectman Keen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The warrant is now open.
Mr. Chairman, I will now make a motion that we accept the two thousand and eighteen town warrant at this time.
Motion made by Selectman Valancourt.
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Nobley. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item is a vote to close the warrant.
Move that the Board of Selectmen close the two thousand and eighteen annual town meeting warrant.
Motion made by Selectman Nobley.
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Spadili. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's closed. Now entertain a motion to move into licensing.
Move that we move into licensing?
Motion made by Selectman Nobley.
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Spadili. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Run licensing.
Okay, we are now on licensing. So we have just one request on the, for licensing tonight, and it's a multiple date request for Merrimack College. It looks like it's to cover all of their men's lacrosse, home men's lacrosse games on the football field. So they're looking for one-day wine and malt licenses for the following dates: Saturday, March thirty-first, twelve to five; Tuesday, April third, six to eleven; Friday, April sixth, two to seven; Wednesday, April eleventh, three to eleven; Tuesday, April seventeenth, six to eleven; Saturday, April twenty-first, twelve to ten PM; Saturday, April twenty-eighth, twelve to seven PM; Tuesday, May first, three PM to eight PM; Friday, May fourth, three PM to eight PM; and then Sunday, May sixth, three PM to eight PM. I don't know why there's some of them much longer than others, but...
Are anticipating longer games, maybe?
Yeah, maybe. One from three to eleven. I don't know if they have a tournament that day or not, or twelve to ten.
Alumni events after, maybe.
Maybe. So, I guess this will also, if anyone wanted to know what the Merrimack College lacrosse home schedule was, this would probably be the same. So, for those ten events, I will hear a single motion, since I've read them all individually.
Mr. Chairman, move that the Board of Selectmen approve the ten one-day wine and malt liquor licenses for Merrimack College as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion to move out of licenses. That was all.
Motion, move out of licensing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. We have, next on our agenda, old business, which we have none new business. We have none any public comment.
David?
Hearing none. So, while we don't have our town manager, I was told we have somebody even better, because I know that there are questions-
I am prepared.
Questions that were launched, especially by the appearance of some heavy equipment over by the ECC, about the traffic patterns at, the anticipated traffic pattern at the planned new kindergarten.
Well, as Mrs. Terese stated, we were delayed one week. The project was supposed to start last Friday, but last week's snowstorm kind of put a little bit of cabosh. So, you will actually see double activity starting this week and next. Thursday, the contractor will be putting up the fence around the location of what will be the new kindergarten site. And starting next week, which you see the structures that were placed there and some of the snow being pushed aside, is the site contractor who will be doing a lot of the driveway and parking lot work.
driveway and parking lot work. Public works and our engineer have been working for the past number of months with Mass DOT on basically three separate tracks. One is the temporary driveway that will replace the existing driveway, because where the existing driveway is will be the site of the new school. So more towards the middle school will be temporary driveway that we are, we just received preliminary, last week, we received preliminary approval from Mass DOT, so we should be getting the actual permit, signed permit, in the mail this week. It will encompass putting a driveway to replace the current driveway. The current driveway will be used by the contractor and their construction vehicles, et cetera, so that we're not intermingling school traffic along with construction traffic. What we plan to do, and we've discussed extensively with the school administration, the school building committee, as well as the principals of the three schools, we will have a police officer assigned to 125 in the morning during school, during school drop-off hours.
Since the kindergarten's open, or even with the construction?
Probably, probably a little bit of both, but probably most likely in September, because the interim, the temporary driveway will probably be in effect for at least a year. So we will have a police officer assigned in the morning to alleviate traffic during drop-off times, and we will have a police officer there in the afternoon to alleviate traffic during pickup times. The second part of our interaction with Mass DOT is the kindergarten site will require us to do some work on the drainage along 125, so that requires Mass DOT approval, since 125 is a mass road. And then the third will be more extensive changes to 125 and a more permanent driveway in probably 12 to 15 months down the road, which will encompass a traffic signal, traffic signalization on 125 itself, three lanes, three-lane driveway for both in and out, as well as turn lanes along 125. So a much, the third phase is a much more extensive project. Now, that's our...
Three lanes in and three out?
No, no, just three lanes. Two in, two out, one in, something. I forget exactly what it is. Three lane, three lane, no, no, no.
Bigger than Mass.
A three-lane driveway. I'm sorry.
But that's, that's our request, but Mass Highway will have to review that and see if that's...
Yes, that's, that's a more longer-term solution to the issue. We realize that for the first year that the kindergarten center is in operation, which will be September of 2018 school year, the 2018-2019 school year. There'll be, during construction, there will be temporary traffic flows, which is what the school department is sending out a notice this week, if it didn't go out already today, I believe, to all the school parents. Well, I know they were planning on it. We will keep one lane open throughout that will pass through, but we're basically trying to separate the Atkinson traffic from the ECC traffic from the middle school traffic, as best we can.
So what did you say about there only one lane that will pass through?
There'll be a one, right now, where you can pass through and traffic will cut through, because we're doing work on the parking lot, there will be an actual construction site, we will be keeping at least one lane passing through. We obviously have to do that for fire apparatus also. But we're encouraging the vehicles that are exiting from the middle school to go to the driveway, because right now, some of them will continue through the site to exit, is it Beacon Hill Boulevard, et cetera. The ECC traffic will exit coming from that direction, and the Atkinson traffic will go strictly towards Beacon Hill Boulevard. We have to sort of, in meeting with the three principals and the school administration, we sort of have to manage the flow of traffic, because you don't want it really congested. We want to make sure that drop-offs are still possible, especially at the ECC, where you have a lot of younger kids and parents. We still have to maintain parking for the facilities, especially the ECC. We realize that any activity on the fields will still be fully operational. We figure in the spring and the summer, those are going to be really late afternoon, early evening usage, so by then, the parking lot that's being used by ACC staff will be available, et cetera. So we're working with an engineer for both the traffic coming in and off of 125, as well as parking and the flow of traffic in the facility itself, or in the grounds themselves, taking into account the three schools, taking into account the field usage.
What happens if the state rejects a signalization there?
No, actually, they're encouraging it, because they understand. I mean, that's, that was part of, that's all part of, obviously, we're not anywhere near presentation and twenty-five percent drawings or anything like that, but it's all part of the discussion that got us the approval for the temporary driveway. They understand what the entire project is. They also have been made aware of the fields and recreational complex project that's being contemplated by the town, and what that means for the flow of traffic. I mean, we're, we're talking really big scale. We may try to, one of the things that we've discussed and will look at is isolating the middle school traffic. In other words, right now, you go in the right side, because it's a very small lane, and you sort of have to go around. One of the things that, one of the ideas that's being contemplated is widening that up, because the major parking lot usage is in the back there, and that way, middle school traffic enters and exits from one side. They don't need to come around to the exit where the ECC and the kindergarten center will be. So there's a lot of balls up in the air right now. Again, we've received preliminary approval for the temporary driveway. We should be getting the drainage approval this week, so two out of the three, but then the big one will be a much longer-term planning and process, and construction process.
Is there, well, actually, because of the Thursday night forum, do we want to repeat it again for anyone that's just kind of waiting? Because this was on our agenda.
Well, I believe...
Yeah, so on Thursday, was it the 29th?
Twenty-ninth.
Sorry, the 29th, at 6:30, the Atkinson PTO has invited Dr. Price and Assistant Superintendent Jamili to attend our meeting and talk about the flow of traffic. The request was related to Atkinson, but obviously, I'm sure we can talk about the whole site, since they're kind of all bundled together. And anyone is welcome to come, even if they're not an Atkinson parent, to that meeting, 6:30 in the cafeteria at the Atkinson.
Right, if I remember correctly, the Superintendent Price presented to the school building committee a preliminary draft release of explaining all of the traffic flows and the parking requirements, and how it's going to work for the schools during the construction period.
Yeah, obviously, I think most of the schools have gotten it from the Atkinson schools, and that will, and just talking to some of the members of the school building committee, you know, those are the parents that have a routine. They always go through it. So we're really conscientious of trying to help out the Atkinson school folks. That meeting on Thursday night is open to the public. They can come, and hopefully, you know, we can answer the question. I think the bottom line is, it's not going to be perfect. I mean, this is, this, like I mentioned earlier, this is ground zero for the town. You've got three schools. We've got a major field renovation going to go on there. I think people, you know, have to be patient, and we're going to have a lot of people out there. You know, Mr. Landry, Dr. Price, Dr. Gilligan, who is not, he's Dr. Gilligan now, by the way, give him a shout out.
He is, yes.
Will all be out there. It's going to be a little confusing at first, I'm sure, but with a little bit of patience, I think we can get through it. I think the greater good than all this.
And the schools have pledged to have personnel out there during drop-offs and pickups to assist, and both in terms of the flow of traffic, as well as parents trying to cross the roadway with their children, et cetera. We do have to do a little bit of the realignment of the entrance to the ECC, and when the, when the work starts on the site for the kindergarten center. But again, it's all being taken into account. There'll be, as David said, there'll be bumps in the road that will work out. People will be patient, and we'll get through it.
We're trying to compartmentalize the different areas. Atkinson, easy. I think what's going to be tough for some people are the ones who used to bomb across from the middle school out through the Atkinson, out Beacon, you know, those shortcuts. We're going to try to cut those down as much as we can, and that will be, that'll be some disruption, at least at first.
Yeah, I think if we can just err on the side of overcommunication, whenever we know something is the way it's going to be, you know, communicating that out by every, in every way we can, and forums, and, you know.
It's a tricky say. We have our school building contractor. We have a site contractor. We're trying to coordinate him as much as we can. Selectman Keen on it. It's, I'm not going to lie, there's going to be, there'll be a couple bumps on the line, and we'll try to be as communicative as possible on it.
Our first test will be Thursday afternoon, when the fence company goes in there and starts putting up their fence, and the schools will be letting out at the same time, so.
Yeah.
Well, we, it was either the morning or afternoon, so we were either going to disrupt pickup, drop-off, or we're going to disrupt pickup, so it was six of one and half dozen of another.
And to your question earlier, Mr. Chairman, Mass Highway's been very receptive to this so far. I mean, we don't find approval yet, but they've not said anything discouraging to not go forward. So as someone who's been around state government for a long time, I like, I like how the TDs are reading right now.
Anything else to ask the manager, the assistant manager? We run it anyways.
Ask Ray. I'm going to segment Ask Ray.
I guess, sorry, I guess I have one more question related to the tree limbs. I love that we're going to go around and collect the tree limbs. I was, I was really hoping that would happen. I'm glad to see we were able to make that happen. What about limbs that are half-broken and hanging down into the roadway, and you feel like your car's going to get scratched when you drive by them, and you kind of like have to go in the middle? Are we going to be like trimming?
This is, this is going to be a very lengthy process. We're going to assume that once we start clearing up the sidewalks, et cetera, and we're hoping that unlike a storm from several years ago, people don't start dragging enormous trees out to the sidewalk. We're not going to be able to do that kind of work. But between National Grid and the utility companies and the town, then we can start focusing on some of the stuff that looks to be leaning or already snapped off, that may fall in the future or whatever. Again, we're not, we're not talking about just one or two weeks. We're talking well, several months for us to get to everything that needs to be done, or all of the damage that was caused by the three storms.
Can they prioritize, I mean, I, I don't know if Regina's seen the one that I've seen, that it's hanging, it's broken, it's hanging, but there's wires right near it. Can we prioritize?
Well, that's, that's National, that's National Grid. We notify anything that's broken or involves utility wires, we notify National Grid. That's their, we don't, we don't get involved in that at all. But again, everybody needs to understand that everybody will consider their street their neighborhood priority.
Sure.
That's on top of them having to do the other regular basic maintenance that comes after.
Right, we still have to, we still have to do regular maintenance, get the fields ready for spring use. Hopefully, knock on wood, no more snow plowing or whatever, so.
If there are companies out there that sell firewood, that would, this would be like a boom for them to go around and pick up this.
You actually can't do that by law, because you are giving a private business a benefit. So you must declare your trees and whatever a surplus, and issue a quotation for people to bid on how much they would pay, because it has a value.
People would buy it and then sell it, so.
Right, it has a value to it.
Like private residences, for people that...
I'm just letting you know the formal legal answer.
They're putting those textile bags either, right?
A bunch of pink tarts.
Pink tarts, no, no?
Stippling together and wrapping it.
Also included in your package are all the regular monthly reports, so.
Including the textile recycling report.
I did note that revenues continue to be strong. They look pretty much across the board, running as expected, a little ahead, so that's, I think, strong showing.
Again, knock on wood also.
I don't know if you mentioned this in the senior center report, but I'll just mention, maybe I should have said it in communications, but I went recently to a class for becoming a friend of dementia that the Senior Center is hosting, so that North Andover can be considered a dementia-friendly...
Community.
Community.
Yep.
And I would highly encourage everyone to go to that if they, if they have time. And we're running these regularly at the Senior Center, and it's really, it was really enlightening. You think you know what dementia is, and just from every day hearing about it and whatnot, or knowing someone that you don't, you know, who's aging, but you don't really realize exactly what it is. This is enlightening. It's only one hour, and I really do believe the more people who get educated on that can help us become a more welcoming community, and a better community for those who are living with dementia. So it was, it was very interesting. So kudos to the team at the Senior Center for putting that together.
And today, speaking of the Senior Center, they had a very successful health fair. I think they had about 250 attendees, and probably thirty or so exhibitors, tables, et cetera, including some lectures.
Not just health, too. They had the social administration, they had the registered deeds.
Who ran that?
The Senior Center does.
They did, okay.
Yep. They do it annually.
We have a goal, by the way. I forget the number of, getting a certain number of residents certified in this dementia-friendly...
Dementia-friendly, yeah.
Dementia-friendly education, so.
Is there going to be another time that'll be offered?
Yeah, they're, they're offered monthly. Actually, I think I was going to wait till I got the schedule before I made the announcement. I'll look, I'll get the schedule and announce it in one of the future communication sessions, but they've been offering it monthly.
On the website, too.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Otherwise, I would, unless there's something else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Motion made by Selectman Keen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Selectman Nobley. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?